It is six o'clock. I will call the November twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome our guests Chair Wagi, Chair Waggy, Vice Chair Manley and Ms. Tommyak from the School Board. And this evening we have Pastor Misty McCrery from the Saint Paul United Methodist Church to provide the invocation. If you would please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Please pray as you feel led. Father God, we invite you to these proceedings. We listen to you. We seek your guidance and your wisdom. Lord, we thank you so much that we get to live in a county that belongs on a postcard. And Father, we just ask that this great leadership, who is willing to serve and to help the citizens of With County, that they will be able to serve with clear minds, clear hearts, and truly have the best interests of these people in their minds. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve, the opportunity to grow together and to build a better community. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll move on to the agenda. The first item is always the citizen's time. I'll call you up. Each person has three minutes. Mr. Cook will keep the time. And the first person we have signed up is Mr. Bob Darmzowski.
Perfect. Yes, sir.
I don't get that much.
Thank you for putting up with me. You may not even know me yet. But I have a hundred acre farm out there in Max Meadows, and I've got a couple neighbors out there that are pushing drugs pretty heavily on people. And about a month ago, we had that Hurricane Helane that came through, knocked out my power for about four days. While the power was out, some of those people came over to my property and stole about seven thousand dollars worth of stuff from me. We've tracked those people down through the county police. And we know who did it. One of them's been caught up already. Another one's still in large. However, it's not so much the items that were stolen, but this hundred acre farm, ninety-eight acres that I have, I see people constantly coming in, going in that trailer that they're pushing drugs in and out of. And they're young people, and they look like a bunch of zombies that are just coming in and out. And it really bothers me to see that these people are getting away with a lot of stuff. A couple of my neighbors have moved out. Decent people have moved out of the area close to these. These folks that are somewhat intimidating, they blew a couple rifle shots through my front gate here the other day and put some pretty big holes in high caliber weapons. I know that they carry other types of weapons, like knives. I'm bringing a rifle out there now. Excuse me, I don't get to speak in front of a lot of prestigious folks like yourself. So I'm forgiven for stuttering and moderating. But anyway, I was hoping that I could come here and maybe get some insight on maybe how to handle a problem like that. Charles Foster and those guys over there are doing a pretty good job. But from what I've been told, we have a policy here somewhat in our judicial system as a catch and release program. They catch these people, they have multiple offenses levied against them, and they let them go. And I don't know if you guys know any of that sort of thing. I'm sure you do. But I don't understand why. If this situation's not remedied, it's going to get worse and worse. I come from Philadelphia a long time ago, and I've seen what happened in that town. So that's basically my issue right now. So I'm hoping I can get some help on how to get rid of these people that are after causing problems. I don't have much more to say other than that. So I hope somebody has an ear to hear and maybe can point me in the right direction. I'm going to formulate a letter to Morgan Griffith. He helped me out. I'm a Vietnam veteran. He helped me out one time before because of an Agent Orange related problem. And he went to bat for me one time. So I'm hoping to get something settled here at a local level. Somebody's got some teeth in this situation that can really put an end to these people. They're making a lot of, they're making a lot of money off that. Time is a, goodbye. Thank you very much.
I will direct you because sometimes we're not the right people to speak to, but we know the right people to speak to.
Okay.
I will direct that letter to Delegate Jed Arnold and Senator Travis Hackworth.
Thank you very much.
Because the Virginia General Assembly controls the court system. And I assume that, I'm trying to think back. The older I get, the worse my memory is. I don't remember seeing you here before, but...
Scott knows me pretty well.
That could be a good thing or a bad thing.
I got no rec.
But if you follow our meetings and my political career and you've heard my conflict statements, I am a full-time employee of the Sheriff's Office, so I feel your pain. But those are the folks that, and I'd send it to Morgan too because I'm sure he doesn't get enough mail. But on the state level of what you're referring to,
Yes.
that's who it needs to go to.
Can we put some teeth in whoever does this sort of thing and get these people out of there?
Well, unfortunately, it's all on the state level. No matter what we do here tonight, or in two weeks, or in four weeks, or in six months.
Well, I didn't know who to turn to, so I came here. Hopefully, there's somebody here that might give.
Well, like I said, sometimes, you know, we're grassroots politics, grassroots governing body, and people come here, and a lot of times, we don't have the answer. But we can point you to the people who may have the answer if they choose to act.
I talked to the mayor of our town here during the Independence Day celebration, and she seemed to be a little bit interested in what I had to say. So, thanks.
Yeah, if I could add one thing, I would add that you add Senator Bill Stanley to it as well.
Yeah.
It's the Max Medeson. He would be the senator for us.
What's his name?
Bill Stanley.
Bill Stanley? Okay. Thanks, guys and girls. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next person we have signed up to speak is Mr. Andrew Russell.
Good evening. Underpinning our economy is a colossus of a workforce currently scrambling to forecast how impending policy may affect their ability to earn a living and leaves the rest of America fearing interruption to the flow of goods. Currently, the USDA calculates that forty-two percent of farm workers are lacking proper work authorization. Obviously, efforts to deport these workers will immediately put our own domestic food supply at grave risk. These statistics are not confined to high population areas and border states as we too must grapple with the intersection of our exclusionary border rhetoric and our functioning economy here in With County. Countless businesses locally and domestically are benefiting from the hardworking and focused ethic that the immigrant community brings with them to keep our society functioning. Construction, food processing, service and delivery, agricultural and janitorial services are all parts of society that we cannot function without and for which the involvement of the immigrant community is a key component. For this contribution, we owe them a great thank you and continued acknowledgement and support as we struggle to define policies about acceptable border periphery. This exclusionary viewpoint lacks the clear-eyed analysis that would expose the reality that attacking core load-bearing elements of society is doomed to throw us into deep turmoil. Just like an autoimmune disease, this posture will kill us as our mechanisms of safety and defense fail to distinguish enemies within our society from friends. This stance will destroy us from the inside economically and morally for a people that tolerate the tearing apart of working families is sure to tolerate the abundance of injustices that will flow from that mindset. And for those who erroneously believe that the policy fits the fictional criminality of immigrants, you should be aware that a twenty-twenty-four study by the Texas Department of Public Safety cited undocumented immigrants being arrested at less than half the rate of native-born U.S. citizens for violent drug crimes and at a quarter of the rate for native-born U.S. citizens for property crime. Paying immigrants as having a penchant for crime is a false and acutely dangerous position to take. With County must be steeled in its opposition to federal efforts to enact such exclusionary policy in our community as we have too much to lose, both in human capital and humanity. I believe that movement to avoid harm and find safety and community is a core human right, and it is through this right that Joseph and Mary were able to flee Egypt, to flee to Egypt to avoid King Herod's wrath upon their newborn child, Jesus. I declare our law enforcement leadership must recognize the impending expectation of their participation in some of the most brutal, heartbreaking and destructive acts yet to play our country. I implore that our community reflect on the scores of ways similar policies throughout history have been enacted and led to sickening and shameful abandonments of humanity. We must be wise to avoid their fate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Russell. That's all we have signed up to speak for, citizens' time. So I will close citizens' time. The next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Each board member has received a copy of the invoices that need to be paid in their board package, and I will entertain a motion to pay the invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. The next item on our agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from November the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Our next item is the school board budget book presentation. We have Dr. Poole, Dr. Hager, and the brains behind the operation, Katrina.
Absolutely. Chairman, the board, Mr. Barrett, Hankins. Thank you for this opportunity. Come for you this evening. As you know, budget book, that time of year, everyone should have a copy. And I will absolutely echo what Mr. Ball said. Ms. Hall, the brain behind this operation, puts this together. A lot of information in there, and I hope everyone understands it. It's as clearly as we can put information in so you can see the breakdown of our budget. Whether it's expenditure review, how it is divvied out into each category. Now, this one will be the last one that is kind of off kilter for a while because, as you are well aware, S R, S R one, S R two, S R three, every other acronym under the sun, that money is run out. So this will be the last budget book that you see that has a skewed number as far as the bottom line, especially for state and federal spending. One thing that you will notice going forward, we will be back to what it was before. The construction project that Scott has been completing, and I will get to that in just a moment, but we have a brand-new building sitting on the campus with George Wood. So those federal dollars and those state dollars went to completing that project. And citizens of With County have a brand-new building. And it cost them about half of the total project cost because of that federal and state money. When you're looking at that building. And that date, we will have the dedication, which leads ways into the next segment. January sixteenth will be our next joint meeting dedication. So we will have that meeting, and we will basically wear the champagne bottle all the way around the six. Kids are already in there, but it should be complete, complete. You know, we're still doing punch list items as we go through. But if you haven't had an opportunity to see that yet, it is absolutely a beautiful facility and has a lot of positive comments on it. So we have a twenty-eight million dollar project, and it costs tax payers of With County basically half of that. And that is evident when you look at the debt service. Our debt service prior to the start of construction was actually higher than what our debt service is once we finished construction. So we built a brand-new building, and we're saving money. I don't know how else to put that to everyone, but that is something that is, doesn't come around often. But we're very thankful for the money that we received from this school and all the help that we do get in order to make these things happen. So when we have our dedication on the sixteenth, and we're still working out the time for that to make it most convenient for everyone, and I'll get that time too, but I wanted you to get the date on your calendar now. We want to wait till we got through the holidays, obviously. A lot of stuff going on between now and the first of Jan where we felt like once we came back, it may be a little easier to try to get those groups together. A few other things. I know the budget book's the big one, but if you have any questions about that, obviously, feel free to reach out anytime. Myself, Dr. Hager, Ms. Hall, answering any questions that you have with any... A few other things. I would be remiss if I didn't brag on With County Public Schools. Recently, we had four schools named as exemplar schools in With County. There were a total of ninety-two exemplar schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia. With County had four. A third of our schools were the highest achieving schools in Virginia. And you're talking about roughly eighteen hundred schools. We had four of the ninety-two. Porchusville High School, Ruvertree High School, Max Meadows Elementary, and Ruvertree Elementary. So we were very proud of that. That is quite an accomplishment. And along those same lines, the new accountability system, I'm sure you've heard a lot about that in days. Accountability system has come in Virginia and how their schools all track, all track everything else. Well, With County, we have twelve schools that we test. That doesn't include the tech center. So there are twelve total schools. Six of our schools based upon the numbers that came out. And we've been doing that this year. Six of our schools would have been distinguished. Half of our schools highest achieving. All of our schools are on track. And I'll give you an example. There were a hundred and seventy-seven elementary schools that were distinguished out of one thousand, one hundred and eleven. We had two. So a third of our elementary schools, as opposed to sixteen percent in Virginia, are the highest achieving. Middle school, we had one of our middle schools that was falling into the category of distinguished. Now, there were twenty-three middle schools in Virginia that qualified. We had one of the three hundred and nineteen. So a third of our middle schools were distinguished. Our high schools, we had all three. One hundred percent of our high schools were considered distinguished out of two hundred and eighty-five, and there were sixty-two that were distinguished. So half of our schools qualify as the highest achieving as far as the ranking. And every school is all track. That is a testament to our division, to people in our division, and what they're able to accomplish. Folks at the, from the classroom through the central office, it is a one-hundred percent team effort, and I will put our folks up against anyone. And you can say a lot of things, but those figures tell the true story. But we have something with With County Public Schools that is absolutely one-hundred percent something to be proud of. One more thing. I know that some question has asked this. This is kind of a heads up. We're looking at accounting software system, payroll, et cetera. Right now, Tyler Muniz, we're looking at the possibility going out for RFP simply because it's become all untenable for us. We have issues with that. Anything that we do, any kind of system that we do put in place, one-hundred percent will be compatible with anything that county does. I know that transparency is a big thing. I would give everyone a lob in. I have none of that as far as the finances, anything that we do with the school division. But what we do and what she has to do every month is just, is cumbersome to say the least. And we've done everything we can, but I feel like now's the time that we need to make a move because it has got to a point where it's problematic. And I'm not going to belabor that point much, but if you have any questions you'd like to ask, I can turn Ms. Hall loose as she could fit in for about an hour and a half.
And Dr. Poole is aware that we are looking at RFPs on our side of that and what we do together? I noticed on the capital improvement plan that Mr. Hankins sent out, and I don't remember the year, but I was thinking that there was a county finance piece on there. There's ongoing and changes as well, but I do not remember the year on it. But yes, I mean, it's, we're planning that as well. I think that, and I appreciate what Dr. Poole said about the transparency, and I absolutely believe that he means it. But you know, if we can, if we as a county can get a better price by moving the county software and the school board software, something that Ms. Hall and Ms. Woods can get together and go, hey, this is a great program. Because the treasurer and the commissioner were looking at their piece, then that's what we need to do. Nobody has been happy with Tyler Muniz except you, Mr. Barrett. And I won't say that you're happy. You just don't want to spend money, and I get that.
No, that's not the case. I am not. The only part of Tyler Muniz that is, functions well...
Is not making you change your password every three days.
Yeah, it's the financial part of it. But no, we are, we are not. Now, Dr. Poole and I have discussed this. And what I would ask the board to do, that when this was done eight or nine years ago, was not the case. The previous board said you are going with one, and you are only going with one. And we don't want to use different systems. And that does not work well. They have a system that is probably school-based and works primarily with schools and does not work, I mean, it works into feeding county finances, but it is not county-based. But as we open up that entire RFP process, I want to go to best of breed. So if we go to A, B, C as what's best for us, and they go to D, E, F for what's best for them, we understand what it takes for the two of them to communicate together. But we don't make them do something that we think is the best here, or they're doing something that's exactly what we do, is work on the best. Yes.
My only request from the board is, and I'll get into my weird board historian because nobody that's sent us here voted to buy Tyler Muniz, is that when we have people, AKA the commissioner and the treasurer, come up here and go, do not buy this system, is that we don't vote to buy it.
Exactly.
You know how many times I've ever logged into Tyler Muniz? Zero. Has anybody up here ever logged into it? Let's trust the people that use it every day.
There's a, the treasurer and the commissioner have...
And I believe y'all are YouTube-ing the meetings back in. So if anybody wants to get on YouTube channel, Sam Crockett was still treasurer. I'll never forget the meeting. And Sis Castle was commissioner. And they're like, we do not get this system. And they voted to buy it. And I think this is a little bit different board, and I don't see that happening. So Dr. Poole, from my standpoint, and anybody else can chime in, you guys go out and get what you need to do your job. Mr. Barrett, you get what we need to do our job.
And it all needs to go out together to see what works together and what doesn't. And that's where we are.
And I think, I think for me, the compatibility between the two systems or all the systems.
That's what's key.
That needs to be there. I mean, if Dr. Poole and his staff gets one and we get one, they have to be compatible. And that will always be the case. Anything that we do, I mean, that's it.
And call me crazy, in twenty-twenty-four, I assume they should...
They absolutely can.
I can text a, I can text a Android phone from an iPhone. You know, it's not that hard. Elon Musk can do it, I guarantee you.
Everything that we, everything that we would want for would be... You guys are responsible, at the end of the day, the revenue and everything else. So it is imperative that we would have a system that would communicate with yours and vice versa so that information goes back and forth. Because if we don't have a system like that, it's not just problematic for us. And it crashes everything. So we have to have something so we can take all of this, dump it straight into yours, but we have that same data because we have to track that on a monthly basis and absolutely have to make sure it's right at the end of the fiscal year. So everything that we would be doing would be one-hundred percent compatible with any system that you have. And just because of the nature of the beast, what may work best for y'all is not always best for us. And I'll give you an example with the chart of accounts of everything that you see on Tyler Muniz. So there are state numbers that we have that are signed by the state. Unfortunately, when we went to the same system, I had to create an entirely new chart of accounts in order to mesh with what you guys have. So when we try to extract that data now to go into state reports, you'd have to crosswalk it out in order to make sure you have everything that goes to the state correctly. So that's time for us to say one thing. And that's just one of the many things that happen. If we're that one payroll, if a change is on y'all's side because we're on the same system, it has unintended consequences on our side. We never knew this happened, and all of a sudden, it shows up and like, where did that come?
Well, and I know because I've talked to people that, you know, the school board only pays once a month. And there's been times that there's been some, I don't want to call them mess-ups because you're working with the software you've got, but there's been some payroll that has not been correct. And once a month is a lot different than weekly or bi-weekly when people are budgeting. And you know, there's no teachers out there driving Bentleys. You know, so that's a lot bigger issue on the payroll side than it. And we've had issues on the county side with the bi-weekly, you know, paydays. So if we could get together and put out a, you know, a request for bids or proposals, whatever, and maybe, you know, get Ms. Hall and Ms. Woods to sit down and look at them. You know, there's a time that we come in and county administration comes in and we start looking at prices. But maybe let them get together and go, hey, these are our top three picks. And then come to us, or you guys to come to us, and we go, hey, that's too expensive.
That's exactly how we like to head. Oh, make it an open process and look at bringing in best of breed that we need.
I mean, I don't know what y'all's thoughts are, but...
I agree.
I agree.
I know one person is saying...
And Dr. Poole, going back to, and are you done with budget book? Okay. Going back to what you talked about, the new mental school, and flipping back, I guess to the second page, and like the gentleman from, that owns the land in Max Meadows spoke about earlier, you put in there about the budget bills proposed by the general assembly. Last year, I think we missed a really big opportunity with County when the governor vetoed the choice of putting the referendum out there on the ballot to let the citizens vote on the sales tax increase to go toward school construction. Because you talked about what a great facility that we just opened up. And it is, if you've not seen it, it's absolutely beautiful and it's great to go up there. If you really feel mad about yourself, go up there one day and watch your kids, because they love it. And it's compared to what they were coming from, you know, it warms your heart if you've got one, to see their smiling faces. But I think we missed a really big opportunity to put that on the ballot for the citizens of With County to decide on. And there's parents of young children that are going to Spiller in Withfield and the surrounding areas that would love to have a building like that. I know there's people on the eastern end of the county at Fort Chisel Mental School that would love to have the money to do that expansion. We do what we can. And, you know, the governor vetoed whatever. I would hope that these two boards could reach out to the senators and the delegate. And I don't know if we need to look at passing a resolution, a joint resolution, and have them support that coming back up again. Because if you will go through our board package, Dr. Poole talked about transparency. We've got a treasurer's report. We have enjoyed an increase in sales tax revenue the past month because of the hurricane and the roads being closed because two interstates, we've got a lot more traffic. And if the people of With County decide that, hey, I don't mind paying an extra 1% sales tax if it goes towards school construction, that would have been huge for us. And that would have been huge moving future projects onward.
That's a lot of money. I mean, you have a lot of money that-
And it would be, it would only, it would not only be on the backs of us, the citizens of With County, every time you go to Food City, Food Country, but more importantly, it would be on the backs of the travelers coming through. But the most important part is, it is government at its truest form because it's on a ballot and people can vote for it. If you like it, vote for it. If you're like, no, don't vote for it. Let the people decide. And that's what I like about it. And, you know, the gentleman earlier talked about, you know, his issue. And we talked about, you know, how we're kind of hamstrung. I wish the state would let us put more stuff on the ballot. Unfortunately, as a building rule state, we're not allowed to. So-
Part of, something that really is, in my mind, detrimental is, why do you have some localities that you allow to do this and not every locality? That doesn't make any sense.
I was trying to cut my rant off, so I didn't even bring that part off. Yeah, there's some localities that absolutely can charge that sales tax to go towards school construction.
And based upon where we are on the capital improvement projects for With County, you know, we started back in 2002, 2003, and we've made it a long way. And that's a credit to both boards that have continually worked to make sure that happens. And we're getting toward the end of this, but I'm telling you folks, if we can get that one cent sales tax in there, and I've already spoken to them, I know our board is 100% behind that, and we have some plans to go see some delegates as well. There's no reason why that shouldn't be allowed in every locality. If you give some access, why not give all access? And that would allow us to basically complete a capital. The capital plan is pretty much at one shot. One cent would just about allow us to do that. And we look at the debt service that we carry, that's less than what would be generated with that. And it would 100% fill that void. And it wouldn't affect other tax rates for citizens in With County. We thought that would be dedicated to that very issue. And I agree with Chairman Ball. That's the truest form of democracy.
And my thing is, it may not pass, but just, we're only asking for the right to put it on the ballot. And, you know, that's, you know, if you like it, vote for it. You know, it's just like these seats up here, you know, but just let us put it on the ballot. All right, with that being said, I will absolutely leave Dr. Poole alone and I will open the floor for any questions or discussion.
Let me tell you something, don't look at me like that, David. You know when he comes up here, he's gonna push me up on that soapbox.
Well, we had a conversation before, man, right? It's three men.
It hurts my feelings.
And, you know, like there was always a, you have a question or you need anything, absolutely reach out, I'll do everything I can, answer your questions, help you out any way I can. Because we're all on the same team and we want what's best for everyone in With County. And that's what we're here for.
Thank you all, thanks very-
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you.
And thank the teachers. You know, not to circle back, and I'll make this real quick. Circle back what you talked about with the performance of the schools. You know, they're absolutely the boots on the ground. They've done a great job. And I apologize for not mentioning that earlier and getting tied up in the politics that keep me up at night.
We will certainly pass that on. Again, I feel like we have some of the best around.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hall, you're absolutely not required to stay.
But next time, we're putting Wes on the end of the end.
I didn't tell that to them elected folks. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We have old business. Do we have anything under old business, Mr. Barrett?
I do not have anything.
All right, we'll move on to reports. We've got the treasurer's report, Ms. Quinn.
Good evening, everyone. Okay. So several things to cover tonight. I'll start with the financials that were included in your board package for the month of October. As you will see on the financial report, the consolidated balance was $76,165,702. Included in that balance is the general fund balance of $41,824,654. Anyone have any questions on anything related to the financials?
That's what we talked about.
One thing I do want to know, Chairman Ball, you had mentioned the sales tax earlier when Mr. Poole was up here. I will say, keep in mind that on your financial report, the amount that is shown for October is actually the amount of sales tax that was collected in August. That actually runs two months behind. So we're not even seeing what September is going to, well, we've got September in today, but we only have a few days to really even into October. It's going to be the December report and the January report before we actually see those. Where meals and lodging, we'll be able to see, as those are remitted this month as to how the closures of I-40 and I-26 have affected us and rerouting everyone directly through here every which direction possible. But sales tax will be a little different. I did notice for September, when we received that amount, it is a little lower than what it was in August. So obviously it had, I think, I'm going to assume a lot of back-to-school purchases, things like that. But September was a little bit lower than the August collections. So now the information that everybody is wanting to know. Tax billing for 2024. Real estate bills, the total value on the book from the Commissioner Revenue's Office was $14,811,723. Tax service districts, which includes those, we call it road tax, as far as those areas that we have the revenue sharing program in effect for various roads, primarily on the eastern end of the county. The service district tax totaled a little less than $70,000. So with that, the total amount that we were billing out comes to $14,881,360. So we have age credits that get applied, which that criteria recently changed in the past couple of years that all of you all had approved. We have the disabled veterans credits. Some folks receive a full veteran credit, some receive a partial. So taking those into account, the amount to be collected for real estate tax is $14,676,268. And that is made up of about 20,000 bills that will be going out to not only us, but our fellow citizens here in the county. So moving to personal property, the personal property book in the Commissioner's office was at a tax value of $14,612,608. We do receive personal property tax relief from the state. So we allocated a little over $1.5 million to the vehicles being that the criteria is required for personal property tax relief. So with that, the billing total came to $13,111,386. We have a little over $1,000 in age and veterans credits that were applied to those bills. So when you take that off, that puts us just a little over $13,110,000. So that's the amount that we will be collecting. So we have basically bills in the hopper for rounding off basically $28 million that will be sending out. Personal property, we have about 30,000 bills that are going out. So we have 50,000 bills collectively that are in the pipeline to be sent out to our citizens. So tax billing stats. For real estate, I'm going to give you some notes just to bring you up to where we are and just so that you know where things are from the standpoint of my office. We generate the counts receivable, which that process loads the bills onto the tax system. So that was done back on October 21st. As of October 31st, IT department, who has been completing a lot of the work for the Commissioner's office side, needed to create the town export files, update new owners, and run the final book for the commissioner. So all that was eventually completed, and I was able to start applying the tax credits that I mentioned earlier on real estate for age and vet credits on November 4th. So following that, the Commissioner's office worked to fix the bills that needed corrections based on how credits were applied and other things that they identified that needed corrections. On November the 7th, I applied the prepayments. And our office continued working on reviewing the overpayments and other things that needed to be done to work toward billing out. Last Tuesday, November 19th, I was ready to, actually ready to pull the bill file. Had hoped to pull that on Monday evening, actually, and discovered that new owners had not fully updated the tax data. So this process, I don't want all the ins and outs, but basically the import from Vision, which is the assessing software for the Commissioner's office, kind of creates, I don't know if it's like two files or exactly what it does, but the Commissioner's book has to have the January 1 owners for real estate. So if you buy a property during the year, our goal is to try to get the bill with your name on it and not the seller's name as of January 1. So when those were imported, it updated a portion of the information in the real estate tax data. But it did not fully update things that are on our side, which is where the bills come from. So we still have folks that have bought property even up through the middle of the year that was still showing the January 1 owner. So Mr. Catherine thankfully contacted Munus support. They worked with him, he was able to get all of that fixed. We got everything straightened out. So on Tuesday, November 19th, I had pulled the bill file that night. And pulling our bill files are a lot like some of our other processes that I do from my side to create all this. You have to run it after hours when no one is in the system. So it's either we close our offices for the day or half the day, whatever it takes, or you run it after hours. So I pulled the bill file that night, sent the file to the printers last Wednesday, received approval on Thursday, had an error in it, which was not previously there, but for some reason it was an error. So I contacted our printers back, they got it fixed. I had to be out of the office yesterday morning. Thank goodness for cell phones and internet access anywhere. My husband had a doctor's appointment, so I was waiting on him. I'm proofing the new file and I approved it to get the bills out into the print queue. So as of yesterday, the files went into the print queue at the printers. I have not received word that they have finished printing and have mailed. So I expect those to probably mail out tomorrow. So I'm thinking bills will start being received maybe Friday, if not Saturday. May even carry over into Monday a little bit. But somewhere the end of this week, maybe even into Monday, we will all get those nice pretty blue bills in our mailbox. So, that's real estate. Personal property. Almost as good a news, but not quite. Personal property, just received the data file last week. Was able to generate the counts receivable on the 20th, which was last Wednesday. Applied the tax credits on Thursday, and the Commissioner's office, again, had to fix some credits of how they had applied. We had fire department volunteers that received a credit for one license fee on their bills for their vehicles. So they entered those in and they had found a few other items that were errors that they went on. So on the 25th, my staff and I began reviewing and moving prior year overpayments to get those moved around. We're still working on those. We had a few hundred of those that we had to review. So we hope to finish those up tomorrow. If that gets done, then I will apply prepayments to the bills and that process will move on because we'll need also transfer those. So pending, no issues with anything, which right now I don't foresee anything with personal property because it seems to be going really well. But you never rest on your laurels either. I think that bill file, I will be able to pull it the early part of next week, which is the first week of December. That file will go to the printers. I think bills will be received either the end of next week or potentially the early part of the following week. But I don't foresee any reason that the bills would be received any later than the end of the second week of December. So that's kind of where we are with personal property. And as you all approved at the license board meeting, which the due date is now January 31st of 2025. So thank you for that extension, not just on behalf of us, but I think every taxpayer in With County as well. So, now that I've given you an update on the 2024 bills, a few other things that I want to address. For the minutes of the last meeting, Mr. Barrett stated that he had asked himself and the commissioner to attend the previous board meeting. I would like to put on the record that I was not asked to attend the meeting. I had attended the budget committee meeting. And the board or the committee, excuse me, had agreed to a due date extension that was going to be recommended by the committee to you all as a full board. So I will say I opted to not attend, but I was not asked to attend. Also, for the previous meeting minutes, Mr. Harry, you had quoted, "If 250 people had been smarter last November, we would have been in this state." Your comment is dwindling open. So, again, for the record, I would like to say the intelligence or presumed intelligence or lack thereof of 250 people has nothing to do with the delay of the taxes. This is strictly system. This is strictly system. I have stood up here for two to three years now, maybe longer, I don't know how long it's been. Issues just keep building and building and building. Yes, I'll take responsibility if I am responsible for the delay. I am not. I cannot send a tax bill out if I do not have the information from the Commissioner's Office. Once I get the information, if I sit on it forever today, that is my fault, I will take responsibility for that. We get that file, and we work it as quickly as we possibly can to get those bills out. So with all this being said, I will say Mr. Lucas has experienced issues with files as, you know, an obvious situation. He's dealing with the new assessing system that came in two years ago in the middle of an upgrade to MUNIS. Of course, they're, they're learning the system, but there was also errors. So we did multiple imports to try to get errors fixed. They worked on a lot of things. There was a lot of going back and forth between Mr. Lucas and his staff. I was involved, the IT director was involved. I don't know whether to say it's a group, the fault of the whole group as to why everything is delayed, but we've all worked very hard, very hard, to try to get all of this resolved. So staying on that line, we started a test real estate billing back in May with the goal, the bills would go out first of October, like they've always been. Everybody's looking for them the first of October. I think we've all been accustomed to not getting them until January because unfortunately that seems to be the way that it's going. For many reasons, including data entered and the imports being wrong and throwing errors through MUNIS, things like that, real estate got delayed. So we worked on, worked on, worked on, and finally got everything through. Personal property, the Commissioner's Office found many valuation errors in the file. I think some of it ended up being, from my understanding, related to the setup for JD Power, because JD Power now requires a different setup for valuation to be compatible with MUNIS. We also experienced in recent weeks a variance between the personal property book and my AR report or my counts receivable report. I was not about to bill out until that variance was found because I didn't know what was correct and what wasn't. And it's my responsibility to make sure that what I'm billing out is also correct. So with that, the IT director had contacted MUNIS support, which I think the IT director is probably going to be on the Christmas dinner list for MUNIS this year. He's been on the phone with them so much. One of the techs had previously told him one of the steps in going through and preparing the personal property book, that he only had to run it one time. After going through the process and having this variance, when he called and got someone else, they said, "No, you have to run that multiple times." So after getting that figured out, when we went back through, the variance was gone, everything worked out, we've been able to move. And like I said, I just got the file last week, so we've been able to successfully move on. So I'm saying all this to point out to you, taxpayers don't understand what's involved to create the tax files, much less to mail them out. Everybody just says, "Well, can't you just send me a bill?" I can't send a bill if I don't know what the tax is for. I can send you a bill, but it might not be for what you own. It's probably not going to be for what you want to pay, or not going to be what you all as a board would want me to bill out to folks, because if Mr. Volts driving that family, you all want me to make sure that I get that tax money from him. If I charge him for a little Volkswagen, it's not balancing out. So my opinion is, with this, and I'm not being rude by no means, I don't think you all as a board understand what's involved either. So with that, I would like to invite you all at any point in time to please come and meet with the Commissioner and myself, and let us go through the process with you, explain what is involved with this. As we all know, with many elections, if people would vote differently, yeah, the outcome for many public offices would be different. Whether that's good or bad, that's up to everybody's opinion. But any of you who are walking in the office at any time, please come by. I do not require, or do not recall, having a conversation with any of you, or honestly, Mr. Barr either, about where the status has been on the tax billing. So I would encourage questions to be asked before, in my opinion, written me over calls. So that's all I have to say. Any questions?
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gwynn?
I don't have any questions. I just got a comment.
Sure.
The citizens of the county don't need to know what it takes to get these tax bills. That's why they elected you. That's why you're in that position. We don't need to know. That's why you're in that position.
My point is, is understanding that the Commissioner's Office creates the files and the data.
My issue is...
So that's my thing.
Well, my issue is, you need to understand our rules of procedure. Number one, you address all comments to the chair. Mr. Barr, is that not in black and white? Each board member has unrestricted time. If you have a problem with Mr. Terry, you take that up to Mr. Terry. So Ms. Gwynn, unless there's any other questions, have a seat.
Thank you for everything you do, and I understand your aggravation with this board as well.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see the Commissioner or the Sheriff here, so we'll move on to new business. First item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Same.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, who was the second. By Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar? Right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have the abstract of votes from Mr. Count. I don't see Mr...
Mr. Chairman, if I might. Mr. Count sent me an email this afternoon. He's had a hospitalization in the family and is not able to attend, and said he will come at the next meeting to answer any questions that you all have, and I told him I would relay that on to the board.
But we can still...
You could, yes. You can still accept that.
Entertain a motion to approve the abstract of votes.
Same.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have the annual audit from the JPSA. You've all received that in your board package, and I assume we need to approve that, Mr. Barr.
Yes, just accept, accept the audit.
Or accept the audit. Open the floor for a motion to accept the JPSA audit.
Same.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that? I will say it was a clean audit with a couple of recommendations. Right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Move on to staff reports. We have Deputy County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you pointed out earlier, Mr. Chairman, there is a capital improvement plan recommendation from the Planning Commission. It is attached. It's a three-page report. It is a broad plan that covers a variety of capital needs for the upcoming five years. We're required to adopt such a plan every year. There are several ways to do that. You can adopt the plan as it's been presented and recommended by the Planning Commission. You can set a public hearing for input, or you can make alterations as you see necessary, such as moving a financial system from fiscal year '27 to fiscal year '26. There are a lot of things in that capital plan. I'll be glad to go over any of the items, but you'll see a large increase in the, in the water side, just because we do have several grant-funded projects that are upcoming. But we also have come through the last couple of years where we've done significant capital projects, and so some of those are coming off the plan as well.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? Mr. Hankins, I've got one. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about interoperability with the computer systems that the counties have. I reached out to you about our Dispatch CAD system.
Yes, sir.
And I got zero response. Mr. Barr, do you not remember me losing my mind at a meeting about how if any member of this board contacts the county administration, we at least respect the response?
Yes, sir. I am working on a response for you, sir, and I will get that to you as quickly as I can.
Well, we'll talk about it offline, because we'll add that to, I guess, our close meeting to discuss personally on Mr. Barr. All right. Y'all want to take action or just let this play under old business?
I'm good either way.
All right.
The second item under my report is bid award. We've received proposals from three firms, ADD, HVAC, to the Max Meadows and Spital Fire Departments. Those are the only two stations that don't have any sort of central heating and air. We have a recommendation to install five-ton heat pumps with propane furnaces from Comfort Systems of Roanoke in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about that. Staff would ask that you accept the proposal and authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Comfort Systems.
Right. Entertain a motion to approve the bid award as presented. So have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Thank you. After the checks were cut last week, I received a pay request from the contractor who did the paving at the Hitachi Energy Arena with the change order on the front parking lot that was approved by you all last, last month. The contract price is nine hundred seventy thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Staff recommends that you authorize the payment so the finance director can draw down the remainder of the bond on that project.
Right. Entertain a motion to authorize the payment.
Same.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Thank you. The next item is grant funding that we've received notice of. Our Public Information Officer, Allison Williams, and the Emergency Manager, Randy Zook, applied for funding from Norfolk Southern to help start a citizen emergency response team. This would be a volunteer team that could come in during times of emergency, such as we had with Hurricane Helene, and provide additional support to our first responders as they're doing their work. We have a person with experience who has volunteered to serve as a CERT coordinator, and Norfolk Southern has awarded fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars, I believe is the correct number, which must be used for supplies, training, and equipment to stand up that CERT team. There is no local match required for that funding. Just would ask that you accept the grant and amend and appropriate the budget as outlined in the memo.
Right. Entertain a motion to accept the grant and amend and appropriate the budget. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions and/or discussion?
Just for clarification, it is fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
I believe it's fourteen thousand, six hundred, yes, sir.
That's a question.
I've got a question. This is for supplies and training. What's this in equipment? What's, what's the back end of this? What it's, what's it going to end up costing the county?
Once the equipment is purchased, it shouldn't be any additional cost. We've put it in the emergency management operational supplies, just because that's where it made the most sense for us to put it, but we don't see an ongoing expense for this. It's a volunteer organization, can be run within the means that we already have.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 So approved.
And then there's memorandum from the Parks and Recreation Director, just asking, we do have a couple of folks on the Recreation Commission that we've not been able to reach to see if they're willing to continue to serve. They have missed the required number of meetings to consider being replaced. So just would ask if, if those board members, Mr. Burnett, Mr. Smith, if, if you've got somebody else in mind, or if you can reach out to your appointee and see if they're willing to continue to serve. We've not been able to have a quorum this year. We've had two meetings where we had three folks show up, but we've got to have four for a meeting.
Mr. Barr, do we need to put that under old business for appointments, or, and let the board members reach out to their individual appointees?
I think that would be best. Let them talk to them, and then at the next meeting, if we want replacements, or they can report on that.
That's all the action items I had. If you've got any questions about any of the updates or the departments that are indicated in my report, be glad to answer those.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins on his report?
How does rural treat like their new bunk room?
I've not been there since they furnished them, so I haven't been able to talk to any of the folks who were working down there to see if they like how they're furnished. Everybody liked the appearance of them, the fans that are in there to move some air are a nice touch. I was a little surprised by the quality of that finish, but so far, you know, the folks that have seen the rooms have liked them. But I haven't talked to anybody about the furnishings. So, very well. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Hankins, I know we discussed a couple of meetings ago about the land use management ordinance that you're working on. What's the timeline looking at, looking like on that? I know that probably every board member sitting up here is giving phone calls about solar farms.
I'm still trying to give you an initial review in December. It may be the late December meeting, but I'm trying to get that to you in December. There's a few components that have to be finished. There is, of course, the ordinance part. There's also the zoning map. So that's what I'm turning my direction to now, is putting that zoning map together just as an initial review.
Mr. Chairman, we may, and I was going to talk about it, we may want to do some work sessions in between our regular meetings to talk about that. The ordinance is one thing, but then that map is another thing of trying to map out...
Well, I think the first step is seeing the ordinance.
Well, the map is part of the ordinance, but we need to map out what we want as commercial areas, what we want as recreational areas, what we want as agriculture areas, what we want as residential. And we need to probably have some work, as that comes to you, some work sessions to do that. It may not be in December, it may be in January, but it's going to take some meetings between you all and the Planning Commission both of laying those things out.
All right. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Hankins? All right, move on to County Administrator report. Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item that I have is the DEQ Regional Water Planning. It's a new thing that started. We have to have a representative appointed by December 8th. The New River Regional Water Authority needed to appoint someone as well. Their engineer had been talking to the DEQ about this, to see if he could, you know, they could represent them. They indicate this is probably a four- or five-year process of what's going on. So the engineering firm is not going to work on this. I would request that we go ahead and point Don Crisp as our regional planning unit representative, and Will Lawrence as our alternate.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve their request as presented.
Same.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Next is Fort Chisel South Sewer Extension Change Oil. Next is Fort Chisel South Sewer Extension Change Order. At the last meeting, you all approved a change order in the amount of $1,762,731. We actually have the revised change order number one from the contractor that included some mobilization. So that deductive amount goes up to $1,857,55. And I would request that you all approve the revised change order number one in that deductive amount.
Right. Entertain a motion to approve the Fort Chisel South Sewer Extension Change Order as presented.
Same.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any discussion on that? All right. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
And the last item, Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, over the last several years, we have been transferring drawdowns of the ARPA 2021 funds. This is the request to draw down the remaining amount of this general fund, or from the ARPA funds, to move to the general fund in the amount of $600,760.71.
Right. Entertain a motion to approve the request as outlined in Mr. Barrett's memo?
Same.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Last item, I have just informational, the NRCS application I discussed with you all about last time. We did make application for that. It was supposed to have a 25% match. We have gotten confirmation that the 25% match has been waived, so it is 100% being funded by federal, not local dollars. We have an initial kickoff meeting next Tuesday. We will start in Spiegel. We will be looking at Dry Run. We are going to meet at 9:00 a.m. if you're interested. We'll go start in Spiegel. We'll look at the creeks in the Spiegel area, then we'll come across, hit a couple areas on Cripple Creek, and then hit Reed Creek, along Reed Creek Drive, a bridge area there that's got a lot of debris on it, and then end up on the New River. So going to try to finish all that in one day. It's supposed to be 15 degrees to 25 degrees. So dress warmly if you're coming. If it takes another day, we'll do that. But the good news is that match, there is no match from our part, and we'll have them look at it and see what work can be done. So we're very pleased with that information. So. And I would like to just address one thing from earlier, or two things from earlier. One, I would just, while none of us are pleased that the personal property real estate taxes did not go out on time, I will say that the Commissioner of the Treasurer, IT, regularly met, regularly worked through the processes, you know, had system problems, had others there that they went through addressing it. I appreciate the work that they did. Over the last two months or so, they've had regular meetings at 4:00, standing a meeting every once, basically on every Tuesday and every Thursday, to go through all their issues and what they were working on. Mr. Katrin and Josh have been both attending those meetings all the way through. I met daily with Mr. Katrin to find out what the status was, to see where we were, any issues that needed to come back to me, that needed to come to the board or anything, and they continue to work on those issues. I just want to clarify one thing, and I'm not trying to be misargmented with you, Ms. Quinn. What you said was not what I recalled. I looked back at the minutes, and what I said at the last meeting was, I did ask the Commissioner of the Treasurer to attend the Budget Committee meeting, which both of them did attend the Budget Committee meeting, and I said I'd hope they would come tonight to give you an update and an overview of their timeline. So it was said that I had stated in the meeting I had invited them to the meeting. That is not the case. I had invited them to the Budget Committee meeting, and I stated that I'd hope they would come to give an update on the timeline there. So since that was brought up and called out, I just wanted to address that situation. So thank you.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Barrett?
No, sir.
Move on to County Attorney, Mr. Forling. Anything from you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have anything to report this evening.
Thank you. Move on to Board Reports. Board Supervisors' time. Mr. Terry, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only thing I got is just Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Mr. Morgan?
I have nothing, except Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of things. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody for the, on behalf of my family, passing on my father-in-law. Thank you for the calls, texts, flowers, food, visits. I do appreciate that, and I know I'm speaking for my mother-in-law and the family. They really appreciate it as well. So thank you all for all that. That meant a lot to us. So we do appreciate that. Next thing I have on the agenda for me, Mr. Chairman, is I want to thank Mr. Hefferson for serving on the Planning Commission for the last four years. He has asked to be to step down for several different reasons. So I do appreciate everything that he did, the time that he served for Chisel District as the Planning Commission Representative, and I would like to make a motion to appoint Mike Pruitt for his replacement on the Planning Commission, so.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Smith to appoint Mr. Mike Pruitt, I guess, for the remainder of the term?
To actually start in January 1st, 2025.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that motion? All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Cook?
Have nothing.
All right. The Happy Thanksgiving. Ladies and gentlemen, East Whitfield, Ms. Lawson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we close county offices on December 23rd. That's a Monday. It's already, you know, closed on, I don't, is it doable?
Think it's Tuesday.
Sorry.
23rd is Monday.
So we already closed the weekend, and then it's closed Tuesday and Wednesday. Our board meeting is Thursday.
I'm sorry. Which date did you say?
The 23rd, Monday.
Oh, Monday the 23rd. I'm sorry. I heard 31st. I'm sorry. Monday the 23rd. Okay.
So I just hate for all them, I mean, it'd be nice to give our employees and staff a long weekend without coming back for one day, if that's doable. If you all, Mr. Hankins, Mr. Barrett, if you think that's doable, I'll make that motion.
All right. Have a motion by Ms. Lawson to close county offices on December the 23rd, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? I always have to channel the former board member. He said, if you've got as many kids as I do, you need an extra day for Christmas, for my crops. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved. Anything else, Ms. Lawson?
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Burnett?
The only really question I had was, I was reading the information, the auditor report, that had some things for the Treasurer and the Commissioner. Are you familiar with that, Ms. Quinn? The auditor report that was in the, and it had the two things for you? Would you be able to let me know?
That one was the one item we had failed to, and yet the sheriff speaks that were collected to the state. I take full responsibility for that one. We had some personnel changes, and I was the one that had that to come through. I just did not notify the person that sends that on to the state that we had received that. So I am aware of that. The auditors had, we had talked about that when they came for the audit, and they had already previously sent me a copy of the report. So yes, I am aware of that, and like I said, I do take full responsibility for that one, because that was entirely on me, because I did not pass on to my other person that those funds had been received and needed to be sent out. So, so yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But yeah, the other item, I think the other item was the Commissioner's Office issue that I'm not sure about that one.
Yeah, they wasn't here, so I just wanted to ask you. Thank you.
And I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and that's all I have.
And a Merry Christmas. Yeah, it's kind of odd, because I was looking back, and I don't know if Ms. Lawson can recall, but usually, the seven years we've sat up here, usually our meetings are like right after the holidays. I think this is the first one we've had, right before holidays.
It's a late Thanksgiving this year.
So absolutely Happy Thanksgiving. And just, Mr. Barrett, we regularly have the Treasurer, the Commissioner, and the Sheriff on the agenda, and not to, just not to be rude, but can we send them our rules of procedure, just as a reminder? Time and a place for everything, and we try to, or I try to run a neat meeting. So with that being said, next item on our agenda is closed session under 2.2371185 for prospective industrial projects, specifically projects broadcast in an unnamed project. So I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Same.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Will now be a closed session. Back and open session on the record. Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Whereas the West County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Info Act, whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the West County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore being resolved that the West County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters that lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in this motion convened in this closed meeting, were heard, discussed, and are considered by the West County Board of Supervisors, and I will make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Terry to ratify the certification. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any questions or discussion on that motion? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Mr. Barrett, is there anything else to come before the board?
There's a.
Mr. Hankins?
Just would remind you that Max Meadows Fire Department is doing dedication of its new fire truck on December the 1st at 4:00 p.m. They've invited you to attend if you'd like.
All right. Mr. Forling, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Collins?
Yes, sir.
You had your time. Go ahead.
Can I hand out, I can't do this one thing. I'll hand this out, just, the Apex Holdings LLC, as you know, they are doing a Christmas to Remember event up there, which is a light show and a craft event show at the barn and everything. Mr. Melkin met with Matt and I last week. It was the first time we understood this was not directly under the control of Apex Holdings LLC, but this was through this Withfield Christmas to Remember LLC, which is Mr. Riggins, and what I understand, one of the owners that partnered with Mr. Barry.
Lawson.
In the process, Chris.
Menorski.
Thank you. Anyway, the lease just indicates that we will do a, if they want a sublease, they just have to get the board's approval on it. Obviously, it's a big event that's going on. I thought it was all under them. They sent this to us at the end of last week. I would ask that you all authorize the county administrator and county attorney to approve this sublease upon clarification. Mr. Collins is working with them to get the, make certain Withfield Christmas to Remember LLC is a registered entity in Virginia, and I want to get a copy of the insurance certification as well. But the meal's tax, emissions tax, entry fee, all of that is to be paid to us, and we discussed that.
So this is a sublease for how long?
This is through January 11th, '24. So this is just while they're going to the Christmas lights. That says '24, and it should be 1/11/25. Thank you for asking that question.
Okay. Question, Mr. Barrett, and I didn't realize this was a sublease. I thought it was through the Bobcats Organization, but the name, Withfield Christmas to Remember. Withfield is a town that's incorporated within Withfield that has no financial contributions to that property. I understand everything's already in motion for this year, but in the future, I would ask that it's Withfield County Christmas to Remember. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think they kept, I don't know all the details. I just think they kept the same, because that's what, this is same event they had on Main Street in Withfield, and they just kind of changed it a little bit. So just give you background. I know that, I understand what you're saying.
And I think that's the way I understood it, but I didn't know there was any action to come before this board, because I thought it was under that, but if this is going to be an annual event, I think it needs to be named property, and I would say the same thing if they named it the tree Christmas to Remember. Anyway, going back.
Anyway, I apologize for not having it earlier, not knowing it earlier in the process. I just, I just assumed it was all part of it in the process.
That was part of our early discussions, was that they were intending to go there.
So, I mean, it's a good event. I don't know what the intent is to draw people out there.
I have heard very positive comments from several people about the light display. I have not seen it, but apparently you can see it from the interstate, and it has drawn people that didn't realize it was going on, but so.
It looks really cool from the interstate. I have plans to take my nieces and nephews theirs, their Christmas present. So I was like, I'm really excited that Withfield County has something like that, and a lot of people are.
Anyway, y'all don't mind just authorizing the county administrator and county attorney to approve the sublease?
So will.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second by Mr. Morgan. Any questions or discussion further? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. All right. Does anybody else have anything to come before the board? All right. Hearing none, we'll be adjourned.